So, we opened the meeting earlier for an executive session right around 6:30. And we have voted to come back to our open meeting regular session. Just to let you know that meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on Berlin Cable and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. The first thing is approval of minutes, and I believe there are not any right now. So, we move on to correspondence. And we had, or did we have, any correspondence?
On the town meeting proceedings validation?
Yes.
It is, we have both Representative Naughton and Senator Tran's offices looking into the status of the legislation. They're going to try to expedite it. And we're just continuing to contact them and to try to get updates.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is general public comment. If anyone has anything. Seeing nothing, we'll move on. Unfortunately, we're behind on our appointments. We will start with the Wendler property, the conservation restriction and a signature.
The annual town meeting in 2019 took a vote on this property. And so, I do have documents here that Sudbury Valley Trustees have provided. The first is an acceptance of the deed, and that's going to be attached to the certified copy of the town meeting vote. The second is the actual conservation restriction. So, I'm going to need the board to sign the first page of the acceptance of deed. There are two originals here. And then, sign the conservation restriction twice. So, hopefully...
Okay. Do I hear a motion to sign the document?
So would you.
And seconded.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Love these little stickies. Are you giving a, just a regular presentation?
It's going to be very, very great.
Okay. I mean, I just didn't know if you were doing like a PowerPoint or anything, just a...
No, no. Not right now.
Okay. All right. So, moving on to our appointment with the finance team.
And that is, well, this is our first official visit with the select boards. So, I'll introduce myself. I'm Margaret Narrows. The town administrator and part of the town's administrative finance team.
June Follin, Town Accountant.
Molly Lee, Assessing Director.
And it's going to be President and Collector.
Welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
It's nice to see you. Happy to meet you.
Nice to see you again.
Yeah.
So, our team has been busy at work talking about funding for the operating budget. We've been focusing a lot on revenue projections, and we've also been focusing on trying to rein in revenues or better understand where revenues come from in order to fund the budget so that we can try to mitigate tax rate impacts in future years. So, what you have in front of you is the budget sheet. I think you saw this actually at your last meeting. The second half of this workbook is actually the expense budget, which we went over at your last meeting, or two meetings ago. The first part of this, though, I just want to, I know that you have the, you actually have a presentation in your Google Drive folder too, which you're welcome to look at at your leisure. But what I want to do is on the first page of this spreadsheet, this is actually budget revenues, oh, and there it is, right there. This is actually a budget revenue summary. So, what our administrative finance team has been working on is trying to get a handle on the local property taxes. That's the first line that you see on that spreadsheet. Now, in prior years, the town has, I don't want to say, well, the town has actually used solid revenues and then based on expense growth, that is adjusted. What we'd like to do is see that as a firm number based on the actual prior year's tax levy plus the 2.5%. So, what I show you here, in FY '20, the actual tax levy used to fund the operating budget was almost $12 million. It was $11,970,351. In FY '21, based on the prior year's levy limit plus the 2.5% increase, we're looking at actual available tax levy of $12,374,416. That is calculated by taking the prior year's levy limit, which was 11, in FY '20, it's $11,569,324, adding the allowed 2.5%, which is representative of Prop 2.5. That's the amount that the tax levy can grow by. That amount was $289,233. And then, adding projected, and then add, well, I'm sorry, adding actual new growth, which in FY '20 is $214,044. That totals the local property taxes that the administrative finance team supports using to fund the operating budget. And we would not, you know, we would encourage not seeing any movement in that line upwards because that would start dipping into the town's excess levy capacity, which I'll touch on very briefly here. Now, as far as revenue sources, in addition to local property taxes, we would add estimated new growth for FY '21, which we're figuring right now is about $200,000. We would add state aid, which we've funded, which we've level funded for the time being from FY '20 because we just don't have those numbers yet. We would add local receipts, which would be everything from motor vehicle excise to license and permit fees to fines and forfeitures. So, all locally generated receipts. Then, we would add offset receipts. So, June, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a couple of lines. We have the plumbing and electrical inspectors that are funded from offset receipts. And we also have a little money from the sale of cemetery lots that goes into this amount of money to fund...
No, that's the transfer station.
Oh, I'm sorry. Transfer station, not cemetery. I'm thinking of something, I'm thinking of reserve receipts, aren't I?
Yep.
Okay. Transfer station, offset receipts. And those would fund portions of the operating budget. And finally, reserve receipts. On the first page of your spreadsheet, the reserve receipts represent, on this next page here, money from ambulance receipts, which would be $100,000. That's an estimate. We would add any sale of cemetery lots, and those haven't been factored in yet into our revenue estimates. And then, finally, a sum of money either, well, this would be a sum of money from the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund to pay off the ladder truck debt. Okay? Now, we've discussed, and I've been discussing with the Capital Planning Committee, too, use of either the Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Fund monies or free cash to pay off the ladder truck. The ladder truck is not excluded debt. It is sitting on the budget and is being funded through the tax base. By paying it from available appropriate funds, it's removing, it's removing that from the tax burden. And it's kind of six of one, half of the other. If we used free cash, this past year was certified at a pretty high level. We received over $300,000 in permit and license fees that we consider as an administrative finance team, we consider that as a non-recurring revenue because these are permits that were issued once for River Bridge in this case, and we won't see them again. So, it would be appropriate to apply those monies to another one-time expense, in this case, the ladder truck payoff. So, we have a couple of scenarios here. We've presented either a full ladder truck payoff or one-year pay-down of the ladder truck debt, which would mean next year, the ladder truck debt would come back. And I think we'd probably recommend again using those mitigation funds or free cash to pay the ladder truck off. The ladder truck is the only, the ladder truck is the only debt service in our operating budget that is not excluded. There is a significant amount of excluded debt that we pay. And by excluded debt, it means that the amount paid for the principal and interest is excluded from Prop 2.5 levy limit. So, it's allowed to be paid by the taxpayers over and above those 2.5% increases or above the levy limit. One of the big reasons this town has seen excess levy capacity, large amounts of excess levy capacity, is because it's had a good practice, in my opinion, a good practice of not really tapping that excess levy capacity and thereby avoiding major spikes in the tax rate and tax bills. However, this past year, and we can make this presentation available, if you look on page, on the page that shows a levy limit to excess levy capacity graph, it's in your presentation.
Page five.
Oh, it's on, it's in this presentation?
The blue line represents the levy limit without debt and capital exclusions. So, that's the levy...
How's your black and white?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which one's blue?
Oh, Molly.
Page four.
No, I was scribbling on it. Give me that back. Okay. All right. Blue is fine.
It's a problem when you have, when you can only copy things in black and white.
So, it's page four?
It's page four. Yeah. The graph is called Levy Limit to Excess Levy Capacity.
It's page five.
Page five.
Oh, page five.
Yeah. It's the graph. There it is.
Okay. I got the colors. Thank you, ma'am.
The fairly straight line is a blue line, and that blue line represents the levy limit without debt and capital exclusions. That's the line that ideally, we would want to track on every year. We would want to kind of stay on that path. That means that you're not going to see peaks and valleys or, you know, spikes in the tax rate or on tax bills if you follow that line. We've had a couple of instances where the amount of spending, the total tax levy used, has exceeded the levy limit. And that means that we've tapped into excess levy capacity to cover that gap, and that results in a higher tax burden. So, I did put a little circle there on the right-hand side, I think. Is there a little circle there on the far-right-hand side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That shows where our spending or the total tax levy used exceeded the levy limit. And it has happened a couple of times in the past. And there also has been a, there's also been a downward trend. Back in 2018, there was a lot less total tax levy used, which resulted in a huge amount of excess levy capacity, $1.6 million. Based on the debt exclusion monies that we're not using, we should be running around a little over $900,000 in excess levy capacity each year. And we've done pretty well with that. But right now, our excess levy capacity is down to about $750,000. So, you can see that we had to tap into that a little bit this year. So, the next page on your, are there any questions on that? We can certainly go over this in far more detail at a more dedicated workshop.
Okay.
But we wanted to, rather than get into the nitty-gritty of FY '21 budget, we just want to try to give a revenues overview.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, the next page just basically gives kind of the rule of thumb. And it says, "Increased budget demands and corresponding budget growth in certain budget sections that exceed recurring revenue generating ability or managed tax growth strategy deteriorate other budget sections over time and/or deplete excess levy capacity." And the last one is what we're seeing a bit of here. So, I'm going to, Peg, I know you had asked about budget growth in certain budget sections. I think page nine actually shows a graph, and I know it's in black and white. We'll...
We got a color one.
You got the color one. I think page nine. I've only been able to do a three-year budget history at this point, and it's not broken down specifically by department. It is by budget section at the moment. We can do a, you know, we can break it out even further than that. But this gives you some sense of budget growth in certain areas. And needless to say, that when a budget section represents a larger portion of the overall budget, when you see a percentage increase in that versus a percentage increase in a very small piece of the operating budget, that bigger budget section obviously has a lot more impact in budget growth. And then, finally, I just want to put a plug in for strategic planning through special purpose stabilization funds, specifically a public safety mitigation stabilization fund. And it would be wonderful if, you know, we could start thinking about, rather than spending the money as it comes in, setting aside a portion of that money as savings specifically for public safety, capital, and large equipment expenses. So, that's enough. I'm kind of done with my rambling. Do you have any other questions?
Well, you know, we might think of some. I don't know if, I don't know whether Lisa or Peg have any right now. I don't have any.
We'll keep bringing this up over and over and over again. So...
It's awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
And I want to thank, I want to thank the team members for their contributions. And we'll do something, you know, maybe down the road a little bit, we'll do something a little more comprehensive that we can kind of commit more time to.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
See, that was easy, huh?
See, this is the stuff, Margaret, that I think needs to be explained at town meeting. So, when you get up and people tally up, oh, you know, our budget is $13 million something, something, something for the year, and it's grown, blah, 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 that people realize the impact. Because I don't, and I'll speak for me, I won't speak for anybody else but me, but I don't think people realize the impact when it's the yes, approve, yes, approve, yes, approve, and the tax bill comes out, and people are like, what did I just spend, you know, to have my taxes increased? I don't think there's that correlation, you know, because you hear raise and appropriate, you hear, oh, we're going to take it out of this fund, you're going to take it out of this fund. I mean, what I would love to see, and I don't know if it's possible, is that when a line item comes in, and I'm going to make stuff up, that Highway wants $800,000 for a bucket truck, making it up. You know, what is the impact? And obviously, you can't get it down to the dollar amount. And I understand that it goes on your tax base. But to say, if you pay $5,000 a year in taxes, it's going to increase your, you know, personal tax bill by 50 bucks. It's going to increase it by...
Approximately.
Approximately.
$50 per thousand.
And that's just it.
$10 per thousand.
And so, that when this information can get out ahead of time to people, when the warrant gets out, and they look at all the stuff, the people are saying, hey, please, please spend, somebody's going to sit there and go, holy crap.
I just spent $1,000.
I just spent $1,000. And now, there's no explanation, there's an explanation behind it. So, I don't know if that can be done or at least talked to. I mean, you can't get specifics.
We can try. The only hard part about that is that we can give an estimate based on this year's tax bill. But so much can happen.
FY '21 is a revaluation year too, is a reval year.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Right. So, it's hard. Before, when we didn't have a split rate, it was a little bit easier to be able to say, okay, approximately, it's going to be around 20 to 25 per thousand that you spend. But now, it's harder because we have the split on top of, we have the rebound coming up, and we've got other factors that play into it.
And residential normally bumps up a lot more. Commercial stays flat, residential bumps up. So, we continually get more of the burden on our taxes because of that.
Right. So, doing this, the way we're trying to, we're trying to encourage moving forward with this managed tax growth strategy, staying inside, you know, your levy limit, that is at least going to provide a framework so that that part's, you're not going to see movement in that part. What you have there is what you have to live, what you have to live within.
I mean, because I would love to see, and again, I know it's not, you know, truly possible, but if people in the town, all the registered voters got that, and they sat there and started doing the math, that may drive them to more, to come to the town meeting in May and say, no, you know, no, what else are you looking at instead of, you know, 10% of...
Understanding why.
Right. Instead of 10% of the population, you know, which basically mandates, you know, what's getting voted on. Because if you look at all the items that have gone through up for vote, just about everything passes unless one of us stand up and pass it over, or somebody stands up. It's just the automatic, yes, yes, yes. And then, people freak when their bills come in and go, ah, it's just increased by $800. Well, you just sat there and went like this for an hour. That's why. So, just trying to educate people to understand that when you do this, this is the true impact that you're going to get, you know, for...
If the, if the funding is coming from the tax levy.
Correct. Yeah.
But the other thing is too, is I think it's one of those too, is that they're also voting for things that are needed.
Yes.
You know, it's kind of like all this talk about even the tree. I'm just talking. But the tree services that need to be done, that's going to cost money.
Correct.
As much as we want to do things, it still costs money.
It's going to cost money.
So, I think that's the whole thing too, is that we have to maybe educate is more the word for it versus giving an actual dollar amount. It's so much as to, every time you vote something, it is going to increase your taxes.
Correct.
Unless we take it out of a special reserve.
Maybe you should go on the road.
But there is, I mean, there's also that base amount that is your taxes period.
Right.
And the one thing, the question that is routinely asked is, okay, you were at that town meeting. Which one of those things would you have voted no on?
Yeah.
And most of the time, people cannot come up with that thing that they would have voted no on.
Right.
So, if you're going to do that, I think those choices need to be made here. We need to do what Margaret is doing, which is say, this is our limit for spending this year. This is what we're going to town meeting for. You can't put that necessarily on people who are there for three hours to do all of that homework. That needs to be done in this office.
And it needs to be ready to be explained.
Correct.
Because they're expecting us to do our homework here and not have to do that in three hours and try to figure out how this enormous budget works in that amount of time. They're electing people, we're hiring people to make sure that that happens here.
Yeah. I mean, because I would love to see, we'll just keep picking on the bucket truck because it's easy.
Absolutely.
You know, and he's not here, so it's easy to pick on the bucket truck. You know, I want $800,000 for a bucket truck. I've looked at blah, blah, blah. You know, if you want me to come, you know, come over and we have to rent a truck, if we have to rent people, if we have to, you know, go back and increase the budget, it's going to cost $1,862. Oh, well, then, you know what? Maybe $800,000 isn't that bad. So, it's that level of education too that needs to go out there instead of just, I need a truck for $800,000. Well, what did you do to, you know? Yes, we talked to towns. Yes, we looked at chair services.
What other cost-effective ways?
Correct. So, you balance it out. So, then, going back to Lisa's question, it's easier to make that decision of, yeah, we really don't have an option because if we don't take all the trees down, blah, 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 is going to happen. Yeah.
It's a matter of doing our due diligence ahead of time.
Correct. So, that's what I would like to see going forth in the budget, that it's just not a stand-up of somebody saying, we need X amount of dollars. It's, we need X amount of dollars because here's the factors, here's what we looked at, here's the alternatives, here's our best option. Okay. All right. I'm done. For now. For now.
I do have to say that I think in general, our finance team and our folks in the office have done a very good job of helping with those decisions.
Agreed.
So, it's not like there's been rampant spending everywhere. It's just things wear down, things cost money.
And I can't thank the, I can't thank the team members enough. This is not a one, this is not a one-person job. This is a, everybody pitches, everybody pitches in.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you both. And thanks for the...
So, we have an earthworks board public hearing. I would call the hearing to order. This is WDA Design Group, request for earther importation permit for up to 300 cubic yards plus or minus of stone and 300 cubic yards plus or minus of fill for improvements to Assessor MAP 12, Block 1 and 2, Kane Industrial Trust, Frontage 5, Kane Drive, Hudson, Mass.
Can I comment on that?
What's that?
Can I comment on that?
Did you want to say anything else before we...
The board has these materials in your folder. You do have the permit summary and checklist before you with conditioning options. And I think we also want to...
It's in the back of that. Okay. It's the back of all those pages. The very last page.
Yep.
Keep going. Very well. I feel like you. I can't find the page.
We get too many papers. That's the problem.
And the green cards.
I have not received green cards. I have them. Okay.
Okay. And the chair sheet.
The chair sheet was in the trunk, but yes, we have the chair sheet.
So, Mary has received evidence of the certified mailings to the butters and the publication in the newspaper.
Are we taking public comments? So, Dan can...
I'll wait. I want to see what you're presenting. I can comment on what the other boards are doing.
Okay.
We have a hearing. You would start with the applicant, correct?
Yeah.
Present.
Come on up.
Thank you. Let me know if I have to shift this at all. This is for everybody.
That's nice.
Excellent. I don't hear that very often. My name is Eric Bangsnest. I'm a landscape architect with WDA Design Group. We've been assisting Kane Industrial Trust. We have Kathy Adams, who's a trustee of Kane Industrial Trust here tonight regarding the piece of property that's, portions of it are in Berlin and portions of it are actually in Hudson as well. So, we put together, for the purpose of this presentation tonight, we put together an aerial photograph exhibit just to kind of get everybody oriented with where the property lies. Some people may not even know it exists, just given its remoteness as it relates to the town of Berlin. So, down here is River Road. Just to kind of get everybody into perspective, River Bridge would be over here, the Whitney Rotary would be over here. And this is Bigelow Road here. We get too many papers. That's the problem.
I have not received green cards. Okay. And the chair sheet. The chair sheet was on the drawing, but yes, we have the chair sheet.
So, Mary has received evidence of the certified mailings to the butters and the publication in the newspaper.
Are we taking public comments? Does Dan can...
I'll wait. I want to see what you're presenting. I can comment on what the other boards are doing.
Okay.
The hearing, you would start with the applicant, correct?
Yeah. Come on up.
Thank you. Let me know if I have to shift this at all for everybody.
That's nice.
Yep.
Excellent. I don't hear that very often. My name is Eric Bangsnest. I'm a landscape architect with WDA Design Group. We've been assisting Kane Industrial Trust. We have Kathy Adams, who's a trustee of Kane Industrial Trust here tonight regarding the piece of property that's, portions of it are in Berlin and portions of it are actually in Hudson as well. So, we put together, for the purpose of this presentation tonight, we put together an aerial photograph exhibit just to kind of get everybody oriented with where the property lies. Some people may not even know it exists, just given its remoteness as it relates to the town of Berlin. So, down here is River Road. Just to kind of get everybody into perspective, River Bridge would be over here. The Whitney Road Rotary would be over here. And this is Bigelow Road here. It's roughly 1,400 linear foot cul-de-sac, at the end of which is the existing Entwhistle Company. This is 495, northbound and southbound over here. And then, you've got Town of Berlin Conservation Land. And then, it also is, some of it's Town of Hudson Conservation Land. Gates Pond is up in this, up in this area as well. So, Kane Industrial owns three parcels. Two of them are in Berlin. Those are the ones that we're here discussing tonight. And then, the other one is actually in the Town of Hudson. That is wonderful.
It's a magical one.
Wow.
I've come here for the first time and I got presents. So, this right here is the existing town line. It actually also serves as the county line. So, it's, it's, it's an interesting piece of property here. So, Kathy has been working for a while now with the Town of Hudson. And one of the things that came up was the ability to provide water service to this site should Kane Industrial want to develop it in the future. What Kathy has, through many, many long hours of discussions with the Town of Hudson, what she's come to find out is that there is actually an existing water service that terminates roughly in the cul-de-sac of Bigelow Road here. And that, that existing water service services the Entwhistle Company. But the Town of Hudson, since it is likely that the development of some type of a building, or whatever the case may be, in, on this property would actually be located in Berlin, the Town of Hudson is not going to allow Kane Industrial to tie into the existing water service in Bigelow Road. Because of that, Kathy and Kane Industrial wants to look at possibly permitting and constructing a public water supply on this property to facilitate a future development. So, that's kind of the context of why we're here tonight and why we're going to show you what we're going to show you, kind of give you an idea. Does anybody have any questions just before I flip this around on the context of the site? Or, okay. So, I will turn this around. What I'll do is all... So, what the applicant is proposing, right now, there is no set building program, per se, for this area down here. But the issue with this site is that this site is bisected right here, basically, by a system, an intermittent stream that has some associated bordering vegetated wetlands. And they cut right through the middle of the site. They actually outlet underneath 495. This wetland area is actually also fed by an intermittent stream, basically in that V-channel between Bigelow Road and 495. So, it's just, it's like a, it's a, it's a really sharp valley, and at the bottom of it, there's an intermittent stream. So, that feeds this wetland area. And then, there's a stream that basically feeds this wetland area that flows west to east. So, in developing a, and there's actually two isolated pockets of wetland here at the northern end of the site as well. So, in order to install a public water supply, there are a couple of different setbacks that you have to honor. The first is a Zone 1. And that is, for the purposes of this discussion, the proposed location for the public water supply is in the northern part of the site. I'll get to why in a second. But this first dash line is a Zone 1. You are not allowed to have any improvements within the Zone 1 circle here that are not exclusively related to the public water supplies. You can't have parking. You can't have buildings, other than maybe a pump house or something like that. You can't have utilities, that, that type of thing. Can't have anything in this, in this area that's not directly related to that. And then, there's a, an I, a larger radius that has some restrictions, but they're not nearly as restrictive as that Zone 1. So, since the future build-out program has not been set yet, there's been some ideas, but there's nothing set yet. Kane Industrial needs to know, "Do we have water on this site? Can we put a well on this site? And where can we site this well so that if we install it, the property can be developed in the future without having to worry about the, you know, the area in this Zone 1 precluding some kind of development?" So, Kane Industrial asked us to come up with a routing for, portions of it are going to be permanent and portions are going to be temporary. But basically, a gravel driveway that would extend from the Entwhistle Company site. This is, this is the Entwhistle Company facility right now. Here is the cul-de-sac for Bigelow Road. And it would basically want, extend from Bigelow, from the Entwhistle Company's paved lot up the slope to what is today, there is an existing cart path crossing that crosses the intermittent stream. And so, the proposed improvement would to be, in effect, bridge over that existing crossing there and provide access up the hill into this portion, this buildable portion of the site that's upwind. And to site the public water supply up here. Now, you may be wondering why we're proposing it up here. Well, the topography of this site is very strict. And I, what I'll do is I'll zoom in a little bit further. This'll give you a little bit better indication of the topography. So, this plan, this plan is at 40 scale. And so, you can see there's a lot of topographic relief on this site. It's all the dashed lines represent the contours. So, one of the things that we were trying to figure out was, where is the best place to bring this driveway in? If you were to try to bring it off the cul-de-sac in, through the existing, this narrow piece that's in Hudson, you'd have to do a lot of fill and other improvements in order to install this driveway that it just wouldn't necessarily be worth it at this point. So, the idea was, since the Entwhistle Company is also owned by Kane Industrial Trust, it's a common ownership, is to kind of avoid all that work and all that disturbance right now and shift that driveway over here, where it's easier to get a truck in here and to use this gravel driveway to cross and then go up to the proposed well site. So, what we did was, we routed this driveway in such a way that it generally, you know, there's a little bit of cuts and fills in this area, but it generally follows the lay of the land and just works its way up to this area where the proposed crossing would be. And from, basically, the proposed crossing, where you see these two retaining walls from here back to the Entwhistle Company, we expect in the future that that would probably get removed or relocated, depending on what the actual site development would be. But from this improved crossing, which needs to be improved because in order to get a well rig up here to actually drill to see if you have water, you need something that can support the weight of the well rig. And what's out there today is just a very, it's, it's almost reminiscent of like a, like a farm cart path crossing. It's not nearly up to the standards of what would be necessary to get a well rig or some other type of vehicle up there. So, that's why we're proposing to improve it. It would involve retaining walls. It would involve putting some abutments with a possible bridge or open bottom culvert structure here to get something that's strong enough and sturdy enough to support the weight of the well rig. And then, the driveway would basically kind of traverse this slope. There would be some, some cuts and fills here to make that driveway work at about 10%. And then, it would extend up to where we're proposing a pump, pump house up here and a gravel turnaround. And we're thinking maybe the, the proposed well could go somewhere right here. So, the, and for context, this dash line that you see here is that Zone 1 associated with that, with that well. So, that's kind of an overview of, you know, what Kane Industrial's looking to do. So, in terms of how this relates to the earthwork board permit, we don't see exporting any materials right now because at this point, Kane Industrial doesn't know if they're going to need those materials in the future. So, there's no sense of trucking them offsite when you might have to bring them back in the future. So, the idea would be is, the work that's going to be required to install this particular driveway and to install a crossing of this nature would basically be tree removal that may be required, stumping, stripping and stockpiling the topsoil and the other materials that aren't suitable for, for the truck traffic. And those would be stockpiled on-site. We indicated a few places that they could do that. Those materials would stay stockpiled for now. The only material that would be exported off the site would be tree stumps, probably. You know, even some of the trees may be able to just be chipped on-site, you know, something of that nature. But what Kane Industrial will need is, in order to put a suitable gravel surface on this driveway and in order to install these riprap lined, open graded swales for drainage and stormwater, there's another one up here, they would need to import that stone. So, there's a chance that when this area up here is excavated, they may be able to hammer out some onsite rock. There is some exposed ledge up in that area. There's no way to know whether that would require blasting or not. It may just be that it can be handled with hammers and drills and things of that nature. But, no way to know that at this point. But if they can repurpose some of that, that material on-site for the surfacing, they certainly would plan to do that. But assuming they could not, or assuming that it wasn't there, they would need to import up to about 300 cubic yards of crushed stone to surface the driveway. And then, and, you know, probably maybe a little bit of fill to fill behind the abutments here. And then, the rock to construct the riprap line slopes. And the, there's some check dams, which are just strips of stone that cross the swale to, so that when water's flowing downhill, it, it hits a barrier and slows down. And that way, you don't have torrents of water flying off, you know, outside the, outside the, the swales. So, in effect, that's, that's what the proposal is. So, we went before the Earthwork Advisory Committee, I believe it was on November 19th. And that went well. They gave us a positive recommendation. We've been working with the Conservation Commission. And we had a meeting with them on December 18th. So, that Conservation Commission was not in favor of the project. I know we put on our application that that was pending. So, the Conservation Commission was not in favor of the project. So, we're in the process of going through the appeal process on that and putting that together at this time. But in terms of why we're here tonight is related to just the ability to import those necessary materials, should we be able to move forward with, with the project.
Okay. So, you've been to earthworks?
We also met with the building inspector before we did any of this. We, Kathy and I met with the building inspector because we weren't sure, since there was a, you know, the hope is that there's another project in the future on this, on this property. We weren't sure if that could all get tied in together. But we met with the building inspector. He's like, "If you think it's over 100 cubic yards, you should file." So, that's why we did.
So, Steve, can you fill me in on...
Yeah, the conservation unanimously voted no because of the wetland crossing. Actually, the bridge they got constructed, we were very happy with, actually that. There's also a septic system that's got to go up in, up in the field, crossing the wetland. So, that had to be dug up. So, that was the reason why we voted no. Otherwise, the rest of the plan looks pretty good. We are trying to rearrange, moving some of that down to the bottom side. But the proposed site they want to keep open is a pretty good-sized building, eaten up all that bottom area. And then, there's an issue that I wasn't aware of. We don't, we have a, do we have a bylaw that you can't have a parking lot in front of a industrial building? Have you mentioned something like that?
In this district, you're not allowed to have parking in front of the principal building. It has to be to the side or to the rear.
Okay. So, that ate up some of the...
That's planning board.
That, that, that would now downsize what they're proposing for a building. But again, this is still a proposal. But yeah, so anyway, we voted unanimously not to allow the, the wetland crossing is the issue.
Okay.
Because you now have to run pipes, power, trucks have to go up there to the septic system.
Is there a way, from conservation's point of view, to make it work? Or is this something that you're working on with them?
Well, the size of the building they're proposing would eat up the majority of that lower part. Anything below that wetland, like you said, it goes right through the middle, so it cuts in half. The whole bottom part's perfect. It's the upper part crossing it over because it goes right across the whole site. So, that would have to be disturbed.
And this isn't necessarily related too much to the earthwork board. But basically, in effect, what happens is, this wetland takes about a, a, a buildable area, a buildable area, and that's excluding those isolated wetlands. This site's about 27 acres. It takes 13 of those acres that are buildable away, if, without, without the wetland crossing. So, that's about, and, and if you take a look at the whole track up here, it's about 55% of the actual area of this property would not be accessible without the wetland crossing. But that, that aside, the whole purpose of citing the well and potentially a future septic, we didn't show it on here because it's not proposed to be installed as part of this project, is that the idea was to take less invasive types of development, like utilities, things of that nature, site those in the northern part of the site, not parking lots, not buildings, you know, other than the pump house, but not, not major buildings, not occupying buildings, if you will. And site those up in the northern part of the site to leave what's left of the site, which is the southern portion, which is where you're going to be accessing from Bigelow Road in, in the future, to leave that open. And a big part of that is this Zone 1. You know, when you, if you take that circle here and you stick it down here, you're, you're occupying a very, very large portion of this southern part of the, of the lot with something you can't really do any, much of anything with, other than provide a utility. And you're also doing that on a site that has a lot of topographic relief. So, it's, you know, again, I know that's beyond what we're, to some extent, what we're talking about here. But that's kind of what this, the crossing and the wetlands and the intermittent stream kind of does to the applicant in this case on, on what is a large piece of property. So, and you know, what's, what's being proposed would certainly go through zoning and the planning board in the future. But, you know, the idea is, we're trying to plan this site accordingly so that it can accommodate those needs in the future. In terms of the earthwork required, it wouldn't be a tremendous amount of, of imported material needed to facilitate this. So...
And it was basically stone, was it not? Or gravel?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there was, I think we put two, and I can't remember them off the top of my head, but they were, there were two MASTDOT specifications. One is just like an open graded crushed stone. And then, the other is like the five to eight-inch riprap. They call it rock fill because what they call riprap tends to be much larger. We don't need that for something like this. But in effect, all it does is, in the swales, the riprap not only stabilizes the swale, but what it also does is it, it breaks up the momentum of the water. The water is constantly hitting things of irregular shapes. And so, it breaks up the momentum. It's not just, you know, going really fast down the hill. So, we need it for that. And then, we've got those check dams. And then, you know, the surfacing of a driveway like this should usually be something other than dirt, just so you don't end up getting the mess. You know, in terms of the, you know, for something like this, we anticipate, again, because there's no other options in terms of accesses, that, you know, whoever would be delivering this material, conceivably, it would be constructed. If, if it were to be permitted, it would be constructed, basically, from here, out this way. And then, this would be built. And then, it would be constructed that way. And then, they'd leave. The access would be via Bigelow Road because there's no other option. And they would, depending on where their source is, they'd be either coming River Road, westbound, or River Road eastbound from, from like where Whitney Road Rotary is. There's not many other options. And then, they'd be using Entwhistle Company's paved lot for just some maneuvering.
Lynn, did you have anything you wanted to add from the earthworks?
Earthworks, yes. Linsley to Kendallane, we did listen to the presentation. It was discussed among the board or the committee and did approve it for, as is presented, with the 300 yards plus or minus and so on. But nothing further. Most of it was up to conservation.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Now, in this current incarnation, and I'm assuming that conservation could put a stop if this doesn't meet the requirements at, at that time.
Yeah. They're going through the appeal process.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
So now it goes to DEP.
Okay.
So we're out of the picture.
You're out of the picture?
Yeah.
Okay. So, from this standpoint, I'm not sure.
Well, did you read through the application? And, for instance, hours of work? You think there may not, may or may not be blasting?
There's no way to know until, until they're up there and they see what they can do. I mean, that's usually the, that's typically the last resort, so I don't think anybody wants to do that if they can avoid it. So, you know, it would usually be, you know, using a bucket of a truck to try to clog, you know, knock the stuff down, or a hammer drill, or something like, something less invasive. Hours of operation, we anticipated something like seven to five Monday through Saturday, if that meets the towns, you know, some towns I believe may have stricter standards, so as long as that meets the town. In terms of sources, we're not sure yet, but we would assume somewhere local, somewhere local.
How close is, the closest residence?
I have no idea, but this is, if I may go back, to give everybody a little bit of context, so this plan, one inch on this plan equals 200 feet. So, it's a long way away. I mean, this is Gates Pond, this is an outstanding water resource up here. So this is, this is all conservation land. This is town of Hudson, Town Forest, there's a solar field, you know, there's the Entwhistle Company again, which is owned by Kane Industrial. My guess is that the closest residence would be on the other side of 495, though. I don't know that there's.
Is that the church?
The Grace Baptist is down further.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that when we did the Earthworks hearing for South Street, I think we talked about starting work at eight, but that's within an area where there was a lot of residents.
Right.
You know, I don't know.
The only one we'd be disturbing is Entwhistle.
And would that be disturbing them?
No, because they start at six.
Oh, okay.
Through the chair.
Yes.
My question would be, would you be planning on bringing in importing materials prior to your, the conclusion or the resolution of your appeal?
No, I don't think you'd be allowed to do that. I don't think you'd be allowed to do that. Most of where the fill would be needed would be at that crossing, and then to construct the swales. Because other than that, Kane Industrial is basically building a road to nowhere because it would just, it would end once you got, once you, once you reached.
The wetlands.
It wouldn't even, not even the wetlands, but once you reach the 100-foot buffer, you would need to stop and you'd need to get Conservation involved. So it would be a driveway simply going to the 100-foot buffer and then ending, you wouldn't be able to do it.
Road to nowhere.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, it's a good question. No, I don't see that.
And, through the chair. Yep. What are the grades of the slopes on the driveway?
That's a good question. Let's go back to this. I started doing the two side. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. One of the advantages, one of the advantages of doing, of doing utilities in an environment like this, I have to say, is that you don't have to meet the same types of driveway standards that you would for a parking lot, you know, whereas you try to keep parking lot slopes of, you know, usually 5%, maybe a little, maybe you could sometimes push a little bit. But here, you know, this is really never going to service much more than the wheel rig, and then maybe an occasional pickup truck, or maybe a light piece of machinery that needs to get up here to service the wells. So, this is pretty gradual. I believe that this was in the neighborhood of maybe at most 8% here, and it's about a 12-foot wide, a little variable width on the curves, but it's about 12-foot wide here. So it's about 8% here, but then when it gets up here, in order to make up that grade as quickly as we could so that we could, you know, relatively minimize the amount of grading into that slope there, this would be about 10% going up. And what we also wanted to do is, we wanted to minimize the amount of fill that you had to put in to construct that crossing, because actually that crossing, we never observed, our company never observed in the field, water overtopping that crossing during rainy seasons. But, the stream and river crossing standards require two things. Number one, you have to have it a certain width, and it has to do with what's called the bank full width. So you figure out what the bank of your stream is, and then you have to go wider than that. So that's why that crossing's so wide, which is an advantage, because then we could bridge over that existing, that existing crossing that was there. But then you also have to have what's called an openness ratio, and basically if you look at it from the side, you have to have an opening that's a certain area, if you were to measure it. And so that's why, based on the width of it, we came up with a minimal height of three feet to get that right openness ratio, and that's why it looks the way it does. But then, what that allows us to do here is minimize the cuts and fills near the resource areas, but then you've got to make up that grade because it does go up steep. So, and some of the slopes in there, you know, three to one, you know, existing, so it's basically angle of repose in there to some extent.
I guess my feeling is, from an Earthworks standpoint, we have a recommendation from the Earthworks Board. Anything further comes from DEP or Conservation, not from the Earthworks Board. I would love to, in the future, see a recommendation specifically from the Earthworks Board, and perhaps have the building inspector or commissioner here for these hearings if possible. But I don't, I don't see anything that would preclude us approving the Earthworks piece of it.
Did you say? Did you say you would get, you wouldn't get started, though, until after you've?
He didn't think that he could.
We can, I don't know if we could put that condition on, that it can't start until proper approvals are received.
Do you have any other recommendations, Margaret?
I have, I have another question regarding the appeal. All right, so if the appeal is denied, requiring you to modify this plan, it could potentially require modification of the amount of fill to be brought in, or amount of gravel to be brought in. So this could change. So I think somehow that should be recognized in the permit that the board grants, that, you know, understanding that there's an appeal, and any modifications of the plan would require them coming back to the board to revisit.
Could you, could you make it so that if it's not more than, you know, an additional 300 yards, we don't have to come back?
Except that we would need the plan still and...
I think conditional approval.
Based on DEP's approval?
DEP.
Is it another 21-day wait period or new advertisement? Or is it just to come in to modify?
I think that would probably be just to come in to modify. I mean, this is a pending, this is a pending permit. This is not a renewal of a permit.
Do we have any other butters here this evening? No?
Entwhistle?
It would be...
Town of Hudson, and Town of Berlin, and Kane Industrial.
Did you notify Hudson also?
Yeah, yep.
So we would need an amendment to the current, if we approve it, it would need to be an amendment to the current application, is what we're saying.
That's okay, yes, yeah. Going to make that motion, Lisa?
Oh, sure.
So moved.
So moved.
What I just said.
And you'll cite your conditions after?
Yeah, okay. Motion to approve the application pending proper approvals from DEP, outstanding approvals, and with the caveat that any changes to the amount of fill or the plans require a return visit to the board to amend the application. Yes.
Sounds good to me. All right. And do I hear a second?
What? You have the easy part. So moved. So seconded.
All right, is there any other questions or comments? Are we good?
Are you going to cite your conditions?
Well, the, we expect that the order will be signed by the commission on January 15th, at which time we have, the app can have 10 days, it's a 10-day appeal period, so you have to get your appeal in by then, which we'll do. And then, DEP Central Regional Office, the staffing there, with their staffing, I don't know what the timing is going to be. So we're just going to have to file it and then take it from there. There may be a, there may be a meeting with them, there may be potentially a site walk with the commission and DEP, so everybody can kind of get on the same page, that type of thing. I just, I don't know at this point what the timing would be.
DEP in very slowly. We were finding out with a bunch of projects that were grabbing DEP numbers.
Yeah.
We've had two delays already because the projects are already drawn, but DEP just has to reply with a DEP number, so we can't proceed without one.
I mean, for Kathy's project, I mean, we filed, we filed that on November 7th. We didn't get the DEP number until November 17th. So, or, excuse me, December 17th. So it was over a month afterward, so.
And that's just issue a number.
Okay. So, are we good? Motion's on the table. Is this second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
The permit, what's the, what's the procedures for picking up the permit, or is it?
Okay.
Thank you very much. That was helpful.
We didn't want to give you the start of it.
Oh, come on, you.
Margaret.
If I had known that.
The presentation could have been.
So, Mary, permit could be ready this week?
The board would sign it now.
Oh, they've already, they've already authorized issuance, so I don't know. Well, I guess Monday.
Suitorship by the chair or suitorship by the town administrator, if you want to delegate that?
Yes. Move that we delegate signing the permit to Margaret.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
All right. I'm sorry, we're running a little bit late this evening. We do have a presentation that was supposed to be at 8 o'clock. I apologize for that.
No problem.
Okay.
There was a moment in time when I actually felt heat coming out of the ceiling.
Really?
Not so much anymore.
Well, yeah, it was hot. Like, 10 minutes ago I was dying, and now I'm like cold.
Cold, yeah.
And probably the setbacks for the evening kicked on because you want to drop the temperature in the evening in order to not heat an empty building, except it's not empty on the night days. Those can probably be individually set.
I don't know.
Or we can just, like, conserve energy and...
Wear a coat.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll put our coats on enough.
Yeah. But yeah, it was really hot in here.
Yeah, you could smell it. You could smell that the heat had kicked on.
Yeah.
Not so much more.
That's what they're doing.
That's what I thought, but I didn't want to ask.
Right.
Okay. So is this for that spot?
No.
This is for Sandy Towne's spot?
I'm not quite sure where this is.
Your friend isn't here.
It may be different what other towns do for the place.
Come on. This time I had to...
Oh, I know.
She didn't make that speaker short. From Boston to a farm. Execute. We executed some sort of an agreement to try to manage it, but Berlin was the town that we were looking to, to try to develop something. Franchise is really not... It's more like a conservation and planning thing.
So, keep it extremely brief. First of all, under, under human resources and benefits, I am recommending a reassignment of duties of the part-time, for the part-time custodian, removing transfer station duties and shifting them to snow and ice removal duties at 23 Linden Street, when assigned by the Highway Superintendent. I do need, according to the Town Administrator Act, I can make the recommendation to the board, but I do need the board's consent. So I would be asking for that.
Do you, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So consented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The job description is going to be updated now with, now that you've consented, we'll update it, and we'll present the draft to the board for approval on the 13th.
Okay.
Highway, highway snow and ice operations. The, just an update on the budgeted amount, the balance is down to $30,000. So, we've made it through a week, and maybe we'll maybe make it through another couple of weeks with the remaining balance, but at some point, you should anticipate a request for approval to deficit spend the snow and ice line. Tomorrow night, KP Law is going to be doing a presentation on open meeting law, social media, conflict of interest issues, and code of conduct implications at 6:30. Lauren Goldberg, who is the managing attorney there, was scheduled to come, and she is at trial this week, so it's going to be Janelle Austin. I think this town has worked with Janelle in the past on certain things, too, so Janelle Austin is going to do the presenting. And that's going to be held in room 218 in this building. For anyone interested in attending tomorrow night's workshop, it is at 6:30 tomorrow night, in room 218. Okay, and then, we are going to be having a no-cost walkthrough of this building and of the Highway Garage on January 21st to determine whether there might be any energy-saving opportunities at either of these buildings through system upgrades or other measures. So just to talk about more opportunities.
Who's coming to do that?
That is B2Q. It's a consultant that does some work. It's similar to Guardian, they do audits and assessments. They actually did do one back in 2012, I think, for the town. So, it's been a number of years, and with the new Highway Garage, it's an opportunity to look at that building. And I think those are the highlights this week. We have many grants that are kicking in, and we're starting to have to administer. There's just an awful lot going on, so we're trying to make our way through everything.
Did you have anything else you want to share about the meeting with Council on Aging?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I meant to add that earlier. Yes, so the Town's Council on Aging Director, who also served as 1870 Town Hall Manager, has resigned. So today, Council on Aging met, and they had a long discussion. They went through the Council on Aging Director's job description to talk about possibilities for changing it. And I think the thought might be, correct me if I'm wrong, that it become more of a managerial position rather than a clerical position, so that the person actually does have some, some big responsibilities with communications, with the state, with administering grants, and all kinds of other things.
Great.
Okay. So we're working on that.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, Margaret.
Floor is yours.
Should I go ahead and get started?
Sure.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody, for giving us a chance to present today, and apologies for the technical difficulties. We're going to go through a quick presentation here. Should I leave a little bit of time for some questions at the end as well? I know there are about 20 minutes that were allotted.
Yeah. Unless somebody's got a burning question and wants to raise your hand and call on you.
Great, well, I'll start going through it. If anybody wants to slow me down or ask a question in the middle, please don't hesitate. So what we're talking about here today is, our company is C3 Industries... So, what we're talking about here today is, our company is C3 Industries. I'm the CEO and co-founder of the business. We're a multi-state operator of cannabis facilities, and we operate both production facilities as well as retail facilities. We're talking today about the site at 64 Banner Road here in Berlin, and we've done some preliminary work on this site, and we believe it does, it is eligible under the zoning bylaw here for cannabis retail use, and so that's what we're here to talk about today. We also think that the site is particularly well, sort of well situated, and has strong features for our use, and I'll go through that in a little bit more detail. But that's what we're talking about today, is really to introduce ourselves as a company, and then just to talk at a very high level about the site, see if there are any preliminary questions or feedback, and then figure out the right next steps from there. So, just quickly about our company. Co-founders are myself, my brother Vishal, and our third founder Joel Rogiro. Just in terms of our background quickly, my brother and I both have a background in corporate finance. So, I was a corporate lawyer and an investment banker in New York for many years. I went to undergrad law school at the University of Michigan. My brother also has a similar background, went to the business school at the University of Michigan, went on to work in banking and then in private equity. So, we come out of the corporate finance world, deep background in real estate and in capital markets. Our partner Joel, childhood friend of ours, we all grew up together, he went on to become a very senior executive of some companies in Colorado in the cannabis industry there, and specifically has a very unique skillset when it comes to the operation side of this business, and really has been doing it for a long time in some of the first licensed markets in the US, which were Colorado, and then later in Oregon where we have a business. So, these are three, three kind of primary executives of the business. Company itself is headquartered in Ann Arbor, Michigan. That's where our company headquarters are, that's where I live as well. I mentioned that my brother and I both went to school there. We are currently operational in basically three states, which is Oregon, Michigan, and Massachusetts. And so, what I've got here is just a bit of an overview of the production side of our business. So, in Oregon and Michigan, we both, we operate in both of those states roughly 35,000 square foot production facilities that we've built over the last few years. In Massachusetts, we are now building a third one, and that's in Franklin, Massachusetts, which you may be familiar with. So, we worked with that community really since the spring of 2018, through their special land use process, through their local entitlement process, and we have, we own a parcel in the Franklin Industrial Park there, and so that is, that has now been approved for cultivation and processing of cannabis, and we're just in the final stages of getting our state license issued, and then we'll actually construct that facility. So, we expect that to go online towards the end of this year. Besides the production side of things, we're also very active in the retail side of this business. So, we currently have, in the state of Michigan, we've got two retail stores open, we've got another six or seven that are in various stages of licensing and build-out around the state. In Oregon, we have one location that's under contract that we're about to take over and open up, that's in the Portland area. And then here in Massachusetts, we've got three different sites that we're taking through local approvals. One is in Boston, the site here that we're talking about today, and then one in another suburb of Boston as well. And so, we're kind of working our way through local community engagement, through local approvals on those sites. And then, once we get the local approval, we would go to the state for a state license before going into operation. In terms of the site itself, you may be familiar with it. Again, we've got some very high-level info here for you. It's 64 Banner Road. The parcel is about seven acres total, and I'm just showing the sort of core part of the parcel right now. There is another piece I'll show later from the survey that sort of juts off. About seven acres in total size, existing building there is about 30,000 square feet, and we've entered into a conditional agreement to lease 5,000 square feet of the 30,000 square foot building. So, there's effectively divided into six equal-sized units, and we're taking one. So, just zooming in a bit on the site, you can see that there, this is an older picture. The site was recently acquired, it's been cleaned up pretty significantly on the exterior already, but, but it's got tons of paved area around it, lots of parking. I'll just pop back a slide. The access is worth talking about for this site, it's interesting. Banner Road comes down to Donald Lynch Boulevard, which is off of Solomon Pond, and so the, the access to the site is actually through Marlboro. And then, the, the site itself actually has another access easement over to River Road, but it's not built out, it's just an easement that exists. This is again, just showing, and I apologize, I know it's a little light on the screen, but you can see again, the access goes south to Marlboro, and then there is an easement that cuts to the west to River Road, but there's no access road there currently.
Would it help to turn the lights out?
You can just flip that switch.
Probably would.
Oh, look at that.
Go back a slide.
Yeah, so again, if you look, so this is the existing access road, and that's Banner Road that cuts down south into Marlboro, and then there is this easement that exists off to the west that connects to River Road, but there's no existing road there, and there's no plans currently to construct one. But, I just wanna point out that the parcel itself has a bit of an interesting shape with the way that it's situated on the edge of the community. So, I've got a bit of a zoomed-in shot here, again, so you have your existing 30,000 square foot building. I'll show a slide in a moment. We are, we are looking to lease this portion, basically in the north corner, the northwest corner, towards the back of the building. Access again, comes in from over here, so if we were to do this, the customers would swing around to the back. There's lots of space for parking here. We haven't done a full parking analysis, but by, by a kind of a preliminary look, we think there's space for probably something like 60 parking spaces back there.
Sixty?
Six zero.
Okay.
And then, you know, this is sort of already built out in an office or kind of retail manner. There's windows, there's access here already, there's these kind of grassy areas, so we would look to sort of create the sort of, there's an entranceway here to our unit, so this would be kind of the, the front of the retail experience for, for our business.
And how is the building otherwise occupied? Or who is it occupied by?
Currently, mostly owner occupied. There's a landscaping company that occupies a big section of it, there's also a tile company in there, I believe, and then I think that there are one or two units that are vacant currently. So, again, this is just highlighting which unit we're talking about here. So, again, this is about 5,000 square feet of the total 30,000 square foot building. Again, this is off to the north here, as I showed on the previous diagram. I've got just a couple of simple pictures here. This on the right is the actual access road on Banner Road. Here, you've got a shot of the front of our unit, so you can see that there's already brick facade there, windows, very inviting, we think would be really well-suited for the, the front of a retail location. I'm also showing here a side view of that parking area, and our unit being over here. This is a shot of the, of the parking lot and the road around the building where customers would travel to access the rear side, where we would actually place our business. So, there's a number of reasons that we think that this is a really attractive site for this. We've been through local processes like this, obviously, in a number of different communities, and we know there's always sensitivities to this use, and it's important, I think, to find the right site that doesn't infringe on other neighboring parcels or on other uses that are sensitive. And so, we really do think this site is perfect in a lot of ways. It's a fairly kind of separated, and I wouldn't even use the word isolated, site. It's got pretty dense forests around it, there are no sensitive uses nearby, and by that, I mean churches, schools, residential, and you've got a pretty large footprint there with 30,000 square foot building. Again, we would occupy 5,000 square feet, which is more than adequate for, for our use, so we're not trying to put this into an overly small space that's not, you know, well-suited for it. Again, I mentioned there's a lot of parking available, this is another key aspect for our business, is making sure that there's enough parking, so we're not infringing on other parcels, other businesses, but that wouldn't be an issue here. Again, the site is easily accessible from the highway, it's accessible through a fairly commercial area already with the mall and all the other retail over there, so we don't think that we'd be infringing with traffic or parking-related concerns on, on residential areas or other sensitive areas. So, we do feel like, for a number of reasons, we think this could be the right place to situate a business like this. I'll just mention, this is a little bit of some more basic info, but I think it's always worth talking about. Our businesses are pretty heavily regulated, and that's both the state level and the local level, and specifically, we've got extremely strict requirements around site security, and so this is a topic that always comes up when we're talking with local communities. But I've just laid out here some of the key requirements, in case people aren't familiar with it, but, you know, we're required to have things like a secure premises with certain types of doors and door locks, we're required to have a very significant level of video surveillance, both on the interior and the exterior of the property, we're required to have alarm systems with full redundancy that are tied into the local, local law enforcement. We, we police the outside of the properties pretty closely, meaning we don't want anyone loitering outside, there can absolutely be no cannabis use outside of our business, that would be immediately an offense that we could lose licensing over. So, we're really trying to make sure that the outside of the property is maintained very nicely, is sort of regulated in a very specific way. In certain areas, you have worries of double parking or of things like that. Again, we don't have that concern, given the, the location of this site and the amount of parking, but these are very, very tightly controlled businesses and sites, and we're under a pretty heavy degree of, of security-related regulation. Some more detail here on the surveillance piece of this, a couple points that I'll make, we're required to have backups of all of our surveillance. We typically will make our video storage and hard drives accessible to law enforcement again, so if there's any need for anybody to view any of this stuff, it's all available. We'll typically keep the exterior very well-lit, that's another kind of key piece of it from a security standpoint, and we'll typically fence in our shipping-receiving area, just to provide another layer of security there. Again, more detail, very kind of robust alarm systems. Again, the state requires that we have a full redundancy, so we actually have two separate alarm systems that are third-party monitored, so in case the first one goes down, you have a backup available to you. But, but, but we're really, I think these businesses are pretty tightly regulated and, and sort of held to a pretty high standard relative to other similar retail businesses. Another couple things I'll mention, these are always topics that, that come up that are very relevant for communities. The first is odor. So, we are, Massachusetts has some fairly robust regulations around odor, and specifically, you're required to put certain components into the mechanical system, basically carbon filters that filter any air that's being exhausted from, from the building, and so there's already very limited odor around retail businesses in this space. The bigger concerns are around manufacturing and production, but even in the retail business, we'll use carbon filters and all of this, just to make sure there are no odor-related concerns, and, and with those systems, there will be no sort of noticeable odor outside of the, outside of the business. Please, was there a question on that, or? I'm sorry, I thought I heard. And then, I mentioned just how, how kind of we maintain the outside of the property, and, and so we wanted to not only be safe and secure, but we wanted to look very nice, so we're pretty tight in, in terms of, you know, making sure that it's kept up nicely, that there's no litter concerns, that we don't have a messy environment on the outside of the building. I talked a little bit about this earlier, just that we're fairly tight in monitoring the outside of the property, just to make sure that no one's hanging around, that, that, you know, shouldn't be, or that there's any cannabis use is certainly a, a big no-no for us. Another key piece, maybe obvious, but we're very tightly restrictive, there's no access to minors allowed, so certainly no customers are allowed to come in who are under 21. All of our employees are trained in sort of checking identification. Again, this is a very strict requirement for us as a business, so not following these rules would put us in immediate jeopardy on our licensing. We also will not hire any employees that are under 21, and this is again about maintaining a strict control of the environment and make sure only adults are entering this space. So, that's really sort of the, the gist of what I had. Again, I wanted to just introduce ourselves and provide some high-level info, and really have a chance to take some, some questions or some feedback if there is any in this initial meeting.
So, I'm trying to figure out Banner Road, I know, I know there's a Banner Road, but I'm trying to figure out where exactly it is, I guess.
Are you behind the DCU?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
It is, it is a very sort of tucked away.
Bizarre road, yes.
Yeah, it is, it is. But, you know, interestingly, in some ways, that's why we think it's good for our use. Many communities don't want this right in the middle of a retail park, or some folks may want it off the, you know, with a less level of visibility for children or for other things, and so while there's some challenges, and certainly one thing we're talking about is signage, meaning, and that's, that's frankly a conversation probably more on the Marlboro side, because the end of that road is, is actually in Marlboro. But there are some easements and things for that property, but, but it is, it's a bit of a tucked-away sort of place. But, a lot of our customers, there's different websites and stuff where you find where these retail stores are, so people will likely have a sense for where they're going.
This one might be a tough one to find.
Yeah, a little bit, but, but we also think that, you know, having now done this, you know, for example, I, we have a site in Boston that we're trying to take through this process, and there's a lot of sensitivity to how visible is it, how proximate is it to, to children, to, to schools, to churches? And so, while, from a business standpoint, there's some challenges that you have to work through with that type of an, an entranceway, we think from a community standpoint, it's actually really attractive, because it's gonna be as tucked-away, I think, as, as one of these businesses can be.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple. In previous presentations where groups have come to us, they've talked about employment preferences for people in Berlin. Thoughts on that?
Absolutely. We have made those types of commitments for other retail stores, more in Michigan so far than in Massachusetts, but we're absolutely open to the idea of a formal commitment around local hiring. And on that piece, I didn't mention it as much here, we've, as a company, we've made a living wage commitment, so all of our employees are paid, starting wages at living wage levels and then higher from there. All of our full-time employees are offered a full benefits package as well. This type of a location would likely have something around 20 or 25 full-time employees, so it'd be a pretty substantial number of jobs created. And again, all the, almost everyone that works for us is full-time, we have very few part-time, so, you know, we're looking for full-time people, we're looking for sort of people that are looking to be with us for hopefully a long period of time.
And you said you have 60 parking spaces.
There's space for 60. We, we would do some more analysis around what's required of a, of a business of our size and all of that, but, but there's, I, I think parking that's well in excess of what we would be required to have, and, and for us, it's, it's a bonus, it's part of the reason we, we really like this property, is because it's great to have more than, more than you need.
Yeah. I, I mean, that's been one of the biggest complaints about, concern about, is parking.
With around cannabis, or just generally?
Well, we've got one on Route 62. It's basically in Hudson.
Okay.
But they've had a shuttle.
Yeah.
That travels. You have to go to another location and, you know, and then they still have the cones out and block off.
Yeah.
A lane.
Yeah.
And people are really annoyed with it.
Yeah, I think it's annoying for, you know, a butters, it's annoying for the customers, it's, a lot, the reality is, a lot of people have tried to force these things into sites that don't make sense for various reasons, because there's a race to get them open quickly, there's, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into this, but as a result, you've got a lot of people that have put these into locations that don't always make sense. And so, you know, having now done this, and candidly, we've, we've been there trying to license sites that aren't perfect, and it's, it's, it's an uphill battle.
Yeah.
And there's already enough controversy around cannabis, where if you're adding in site complications on top of that, then it just, it can make it really difficult, and so having learned some of those lessons, you know, that's part of the reason we're really excited about this site, is from a site standpoint, I really don't see many reasons to be concerned. I mean, there's, there's always, there's always community priorities and considerations, but, but it's hard to see something, at least on, on its face, that really jumps out as a red flag on this site.
Now, would you be buying or leasing the?
I would be leasing it.
So, what's been some of the feedback, both positive and negative, that you've had either in Oregon or Michigan, as you go in and try to put up a retail facility?
So, there's, I, I put it broadly into two buckets. One is what I would call a general aversion to cannabis, meaning a, a moral or philosophical argument around whether cannabis makes sense. argument around whether cannabis makes sense. Part of that can feed into, there are a lot of communities that have approved it, but still there's a "not in my backyard" type of feeling around it, even if it's approved. And so, so there's the general sort of considerations of folks that may not want cannabis in their community at all. Then the second bucket, generally speaking, is the site-related stuff. And so, the biggest issues I've seen are proximity to schools and churches. That's really the thing that, and really even within that, it's schools even more than churches. So I think anything that involves exposure to children, I think, is really the biggest sensitivity. And then a third issue that's more community-specific is things like local hiring. So sort of, how will we be contributing members of the corporate, of the community, of the business community, and, you know, are we just coming to do business, or are we going to contribute in a positive way beyond that? And that's the other big piece of it.
And how have you contributed back to those communities where you are?
So local hiring is a key piece of it. We've sometimes made commitments to hire local contractors as well. We've, some communities want a minority hiring piece as well. So basically, trying to create preferences for certain disadvantaged communities. So for example, in Boston, that's a very, very important topic right now. So, and then we've also done things where we've partnered or created support for local law enforcement, so that can involve a financial contribution, that can involve, you know, getting involved with our staff in the community, so, you know, kind of donating time or energy to different local events or local law enforcement priorities. So there's a number of ways to do it, and I think, you know, we view our businesses as having an obligation to also do something besides just do business in a community, because we understand that, you know, there are positives and negatives that come with cannabis, so.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right.
Great. And I think we'll probably follow up to get a little bit more information on sort of what the right next steps would be.
Yes, we, yep, the board has procedures, and we're happy to help coordinate what.
We may ask for a quick phone call, if you don't mind, just to, yeah, I think we've looked at this from your website. I think we just had some questions on how the host agreement process and the special land use process, how they sort of work with each other, and what the right sequencing is.
Have you, I didn't ask, but have you been to planning board?
We have not yet. We were instructed that this would be the right first step, just to introduce ourselves, and then I think from there, we would move into the.
Did you speak with the building commissioner at all, or have you talked with him at all?
He's not returned our inquiry.
Oh, he didn't yet, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we weren't sure if maybe they were waiting for this step to happen first, and then we would engage in some of the more detail, but we can coordinate with your office to figure it out.
Absolutely.
When did you, just curious, when did you contact him?
Prior to the holidays, yeah. I think it was mid-December.
It was a phone call and.
Okay.
Yeah, but we'd love.
Maybe we can follow that up?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we'd love to get into some more of the details now, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more information that we'll need to provide and all that, but.
All right. We'll see that the building commissioner gets back to you, too, and we're happy to talk to you.
Okay.
He also has office hours that are posted.
Yeah, we'll go in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Brady. So we're going to move on to signing of the House Choice Grant application. That's here. It's all right, we're just still trying to. This requires, looks like it requires Chris throughout, and then me, too, which I will do. I think I'll wait. All right. So do I hear a motion?
Motion to sign the grant.
Okay.
Sign the grants.
All right.
Yep, I also wanted, I had forgotten last week, to say thank you to both Joe Hsu and Dave Smith for helping with this and helping us to get this grant. I couldn't have put it together without their help.
So, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for submitting, Lisa. That's $100,000. Yeah. And possibly a new parking lot.
I think people can stop falling.
I know. Gosh, I know. That's the next thing. Since I've signed in the wrong place a couple of times, is it Mary's very good at making everything very yellow?
No. Thank you. Try.
All right. I think so. Just two, two.
Thank you.
All right. And we have some 2020 license renewals?
You have three 2020 license renewals. The first is for Berlin Auto Service for a Class II. The next is River Bridge Joe DBA Village Cafe and Pizza, that's Common Vic. And then the final one is a Class I for Village Power Equipment.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. So seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And I think we'll probably follow up to get a little bit more information on sort of what the right next steps would be.
Yes, we, yep, the board has procedures, and we're happy to help coordinate what.
We may ask for a quick phone call, if you don't mind, just to, yeah, I think we've looked at this from your website. I think we just had some questions on how the host agreement process and the special land use process, how they sort of work with each other, and what the right sequencing is.
Have you, I didn't ask, but have you been to planning board?
We have not yet. We were instructed that this would be the right first step, just to introduce ourselves, and then I think from there, we would move into the.
Did you speak with the building commissioner at all, or have you talked with him at all?
He's not returned our inquiry.
Oh, he didn't yet, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we weren't sure if maybe they were waiting for this step to happen first, and then we would engage in some of the more detail, but we can coordinate with your office to figure it out.
Absolutely.
When did you, just curious, when did you contact him?
Prior to the holidays, yeah. I think it was mid-December.
It was a phone call and.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe we can follow that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because we'd love to get into some more of the details now, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more information that we'll need to provide and all that, but.
All right. We'll see that the building commissioner gets back to you, too, and we're happy to talk to you.
Okay.
He also has office hours that are posted.
Yeah, we'll go in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Brady. So we're going to move on to signing of the House Choice Grant application. Oh, that's here. That's here. It's all right, we're just still trying to. This requires, looks like it requires Chris throughout, and then me, too, which I will do. I think I'll wait. All right. So do I hear a motion?
Motion to sign the grant.
Okay.
Sign the grants.
All right.
Yep, I also wanted, I had forgotten last week, to say thank you to both Joe Hsu and Dave Smith for helping with this and helping us to get this grant. I couldn't have put it together without their help.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for submitting, Lisa. That's $100,000.
Yeah.
And possibly a new parking lot.
I think people can stop falling.
I know. That's the next thing. Since I've signed in the wrong place a couple of times, is it Mary's very good at making everything very yellow?
Thank you.
All right. I think so. Just two, two. Thank you. All right. And we have some 2020 license renewals?
You have three 2020 license renewals. The first is for Berlin Auto Service for a Class II. The next is River Bridge Joe DBA Village Cafe and Pizza, that's Common Vic. And then the final one is a Class I for Village Power Equipment.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. So seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Your turn.
Here you go.
Thank you. And we have some amendments to the Senior and Veterans Property Tax Work Off Abatement Program document.
So, Mary's printing the red line right now, but just kind of a general overview, I don't know that there are many parts of this document that have been left untouched. There are a lot of updates that we've made. We don't have the red line here, but, for example, the former, the former program description provided minimum wage rates as of 2015.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so we cleaned that up. We.
Did you have a chance to look up the one version online?
I did.
Yeah, I think we all did. I think we all had a chance to.
You had a chance to read the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay.
I did.
So we've been through the whole thing. We did our best to differentiate program participants from employees, as far as town employment, before it was a mix of references. Let's see. We updated the, which one, sorry?
Participant, so the employee?
Yes, we did that. We changed reference to participant instead of employee. We updated parts of the payment procedure to assure that it's clear in the document and in our procedures that go with it, that it's only the real estate taxes that receive the credit, not the CPA surcharge, for example. We included a few sign-offs. Mostly it was just updating and cleaning up the document and getting it up to par for the current.
Well, it's been a while.
Mm-hmm.
So did anybody have any questions or comments about the changes?
Yes, some. I mean, you know, so Margaret, under the application process eligibility, senior program, last bullet.
Yep.
Must have skills appropriate for the program position. A, where do you find the skills? And B, who says yea or nay?
The skills are actually on the program application itself, and so they're required to give kind of a snapshot of their experience and what they have skills in. And then it actually goes, other review is done through the Council on Aging Office. That's the initial review, and the Council on Aging Office tries to match up the skillset with departments that are looking for that type of skillset. Then the department actually does an interview with the program participant. One of our most recent program participants was just matched up with the Highway Department, actually, in an office administrator-type position to help with bill processing and payroll and things. So that's kind of the path that it takes.
And then flipping over to page four, when you talk about work requirements and completion of work, I know that there's been multiple discussions that we've had as a board as, well, you know, who's approving this person, who do they belong to, you know, what department are they sponsoring, who's signing off, and there never seemed to be a solid answer on that. So it's just, kind of, like, wondering, if I have a timesheet and no one signs off on it, do I get credit? Do I not get credit?
The program actually requires oversight by a department. So it requires some, it requires a participant to be working within, you know, one area of the town. So I know that it's been, you know, I understand that there's been, there have been questions regarding who is a senior tax work-off participant working for. Some of those questions may linger, but in the vast majority of cases, they, participants are assigned to a department, and it's that department head that does all the sign-offs.
So, and then last question, so in the event somebody from COA isn't available to review the applications, is there a backup in place? Does it go to you? Does it go to Chris? Does it go to us?
What a great question.
Would this thing be, do you think that would go to the COA director through these matching, not the actual Council on Aging?
Right. Peggy Sardell has actually done a lot of the work, a lot of the coordinating work, but this is something that the COA director should administer, or at least oversee.
So that's the question. The Department doesn't match.
Okay, thank you. I don't think that this document actually provides for a backup to the Council on Aging representatives, so maybe that's a good, I mean, it's a good idea to add, you know, should no one from the Council on Aging be available to do this?
Right, because right now, we don't have a director, and what if Peggy says, Peggy comes down with the flu, God forbid, you know, and she's out for a couple of weeks, and you have applications sitting there.
Yeah. It's interesting, I think at the beginning of this document, it talks about departments that are, so, under program administration, on page three, the Berlin Council on Aging shall assist and coordinate between town departments and homeowners. The Selectman, Veterans, and Assessors Office will also assist. I think they have their own little, their own little compartments, but, you know, I'm happy to be added as kind of another default person to help administer if.
Well, I mean, I don't want to lump in upon you, I don't, as I've said multiple times before, I just don't want you to be our dumping ground. I was just wondering, in the event that participant one, you know, director is not available, two, the CO, Council on Aging person is not available, where's it go?
Well, I think that you, you don't even have a lot of the other, I mean, do you have a third? Do you, no, so. Margaret is the.
No dumping ground.
The third, on just about everything, would be my guess. So you're talking about a program that's minimal and trying to go three-deep, when our town accountant doesn't have a third. So I think you're maybe taking it further than you need to take it.
We, well, we, I mean, we could, we could.
And I don't want to go down the minutia level, I'm just thinking, in the event, especially where we don't have a director now.
Normally, it wouldn't be an urgency.
That's the thing, okay. So it could say.
It wouldn't be an urgency-type thing. The only time it would become urgent is if it came time to do the final totals and get the information to the assessors, then it would become an issue, because now we've got.
At the end of the program.
Yeah, that would be the only time.
And that would be an emergency that would just.
Requires us to step up.
Right? Like everything else here.
But I think the, you know, overall, the changes that we've, a lot of us have reviewed this, I think the entire finance team, Mary, Holly, when she was here, so we've, it's been vetted by, by a lot of us to make sure that each piece is accurate and up to date.
Is this online?
It is.
Okay.
In its old form, yes.
Yeah, in its old form.
Okay, so can we update it?
After we vote it.
Yeah, right, after we vote it, and then.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Seconded, and then can we put a note in here somewhere to tell people that, where it is online?
Uh-huh.
Well, to get it, they're looking at it online. It's on the Council on Aging website.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just, just one comment, it's not directly, but I'd love to see something similar, whether it's an internship or something that we fund for the other end of the spectrum, where it's either high school or college students who have an internship program here, and we support them also with some sort of funding in that area.
ACAB has one of those programs, the co-op program, that we could avail ourselves of with a little bit of funding.
I would. I would.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah, and I know that Richard has done that in the past, so, and others, so I think that is something that I would love to see encouraged, so that we don't just take care of our seniors, but we also take care of our young people.
Because we would love to get young people involved in government.
We would.
That's right. That's becoming a thing, civics education and practical application.
And with, you know, I know that it's hard if they're under 18, but it would be great I think I'd like to publicly thank Chief Clark for being willing to serve as an interim between himself and our new fire chief.
Agreed. Good find, good man. Great man.
Yes.
Eagle.
Moving on to new business. Approval of the personnel action forms for interim chief.
Oops.
No, look at that. Clark.
Kenneth Clark, yeah. I didn't even catch that, geez.
I fixed it online, but I didn't fix it.
Oh, okay.
No worries.
All right, so. Want to do that one first? So I think I had something, I'm just going to, let me reread this last paragraph here. Okay, so the very last sentence of the bold. Is that right? Or is there a? I'm sorry. This didn't make sense to me right off the bat when I read it.
After the bold?
No, the very last sentence of the bold. Work shall also include any emergency response falling.
At whatever time or hour outside of the above-listed regularly scheduled business workdays.
Okay, maybe it's the comma.
It's the comma, I think, yes.
All right, that's not a big deal. I just didn't know if you had the right word in there. Just didn't make sense to me right off the bat. Okay, so other than that, I thought this was fine. Anybody else? I hear a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the other personnel action form is for LeAnn Leahy.
Yes.
She has kindly offered to serve as a temporary 1870 Town Hall manager on a very intermittent basis through the end of April.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Okay, and then amendments to the personnel action form.
So there are a few amendments that we are proposing. I've already presented these to the Personnel Committee and they support the changes. The first would be that the department head would sign a certifying that the requested personnel action is in accordance with the bylaws, policies, and procedures, and that it has been approved and there are sufficient funds in the account to cover the request. And the second change would be to move Personnel Committee approval or sign-off to the last step on the sign-offs.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nothing to sign on that one, right? Okay. FY '21 capital, are we doing capital also or just budget?
No, I just had a couple of updates for you.
Okay.
I had already informed you of this by email, but just to keep everybody informed, the Capital Planning Committee met on Thursday, December 19th, and they voted to recommend the following items for FY '21. Fire EMS self-contained breathing apparatus, that's $59,560. That is a replacement, and it's a second round of replacement equipment. And the equipment is currently past its useful life. The next one they voted is personal protective equipment for fire EMS. That's $38,640, and that is the second round to complete replacement of PPE. The next is the annual cruiser replacement. That is $53,000. They did remove a few things too, which I noted in the, in the email. They voted to approve or to recommend $20,000 for the Police Department's video security upgrades. That is the cell block video system, which went out and they're currently using a loner system. And then the last thing they recommended was, or will be recommending, is meeting room recording equipment and installation, $40,000 to be paid from the PEG access account. That's through the Cable Access Committee. And the Capital Planning Committee will be attending your meeting on January 27th to present the recommended capital improvement program. And I will be doing that jointly with them, since I'm also required to provide the same, well, to provide recommendations on capital.
Just a quick question. The PEG money is not actually our money.
It is our money.
It is, aye?
It is our money. It's derived from an outside source, but because it comes through the Treasury, the town does have control of the money. It is money that comes in through cable, I don't know, it's cable, subscription charges, that's right. And it's money received by the town, and it does come through the town Treasury. The town does have to approve the spending through an article. It's not treated like a regular department budget, but the town does have to approve the spending for it.
It has to be appropriated at town meeting.
A question on the annual cruiser replacement.
Yes.
So we have a car coming into the fleet, what's leaving the fleet?
I don't have that detail because I only have the outline, but I can get you that information.
Okay.
I do have that in the capital request that was submitted.
Is that the one that just has been limping along? I think there's, there's one of the vehicles that has just been.
I don't know.
He's told us multiple times that it's had numerous fixes.
Is it the one that Dave is using?
No, it's still with the Police Department.
Yeah, but it's.
It's the one that they're replacing. I don't care, I don't know if this year is the one that they replaced or not this year.
I'll get you the detail on years and condition.
There's one that was half-dead.
So I know in the, in the Capital Planning, I think it's in the budget, Capital Planning section online for all of us, there's a spreadsheet for the fire trucks, and then there's a spreadsheet for the police cars that gives like make-year, model, mileage. So can that just be expanded to say, you know, car one is out? You know, car one being replaced, car three being removed or something? Just so that we have like a visual representation on? Since it's already there.
I'm sure Chief would be able to, yeah, I'm sure Chief could be able to do that.
Yeah, same with anything for the fire. You know, what goes, what comes in, what goes out, just so that we can keep that, you know, so that we're not building the fleet, building the fleet that we truly are, in, out, in, out. And then also like on the out, what are we doing with the ones that are going out? Are we just turning them back in? Are we selling them? Are we putting them on eBay? Like, who's the mayor?
The town has actually begun specifying disposition of the, of the equipment in the articles for town meetings. So it's, it's being directed by town meeting vote of what's happening with the old vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think, I don't, I don't know what he proposes for this. I don't have the thing in front of me, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
But I can get you those details too.
Well, because I know, who's the Fitchburg mayor, Dean somebody? He basically went on eBay and sold one of their, I think, town fire trucks and got far more money than if he had turned it in as a, you know, here, I'll turn this in and we'll give you, yeah, yeah, and I'll give you $10 off the car. So I'm just curious as to what's been looked at. Are we, are we looking at true economy of, well, if we turn it in, we're going to get a dollar. If we sell it online, we're going to get $5. If we turn it in for scrap, we're going to get $10. So I just want to look at that to make sure that we are getting the best bang for our buck.
Yeah, and what makes the most sense.
Correct.
And the board can actually direct by policy how items are disposed of. So if I, it has to be written policy. So you've got the disposal of surplus equipment policy. I don't have that in front of me either.
That's fine, no, no, that's fine.
I don't know if you've already written it in, but it's certainly something that could be written in.
It is something too that can be used for lawn mowers that die, for cemetery or any of highway equipment that dies. You know, what are some options? Instead of just old tried and true of, here, I'm just going to turn it in. Well, let's start thinking outside the box. What can we do to get more money for the town?
Yeah, and June actually tracks the depreciation of assets. So she actually had, is tracking all of that information. So we'd know, we'd be able to look at the depreciated value and say, okay, what's the best course?
Right.
Right?
Okay. Thanks, June. I know.
Thank you.
Just trying to do things differently.
And so you have several budgets that you would like us to approve also?
I have 21 lines, and I hope I'm still on my A-game to go over them. Mary just handed me your, your policy on disposal of surplus equipment and supplies. It does say bid or auction, so eBay could, would likely fall under that category. So, thank you, Mary.
You sold cruisers through municipal before.
A municipal, or you could even do some sort of other public auction.
I just want to make sure that we're looking at all options for money to come back to the town and just not tried and true, we've always done this, therefore, we're always going to do it.
It used to be a lot more limited, now it's sold, we have a little bit more.
Flexibility?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have 21 more lines here for, with recommendations for the board's approval. The first thing I want to say is that some of these lines are actually for personnel lines. What I have recommended, and I think I put this in an email to the board, what I am recommending at this moment is the wage line with the 1.5% increase for non-union positions, but not with any other wage adjustments above and beyond that that the Personnel Committee might be recommending. So I would make adjustments on that later. Okay. And Personnel Committee will be coming to either your next meeting or the following meeting with the recommendations on wage adjustments for certain positions. Okay? All right, first one. First one, full-time wages for Selectmen. That, I am recommending the requested budget of $67,401. Even though that shows as a 0.9% increase, it takes into account some extra funding that was made available last year, or it removes extra funding that was available last year. So it truly is a 1.5% increase on the base. The next one is Selectmen expenses. That does show a decrease of $10,000, but last year and the prior year, in FY '19 and '20, additional monies were built into that budget for, I believe it was the town administrator recruitment and other special costs. Those are being removed and also being shifted over to the consulting line. The next one is the accountant full-time salary. The requested $83,519 does represent the 1.5% increase, so I'm recommending that. The assessor's salary, or I'm sorry, the assessor, the assessor's expenses, that is a very minor increase due to software costs and a couple of office supplies. So I am recommending that. That's a 1.7% increase. The next one is revaluation expenses. They have actually trimmed the cost for the revale by $2,500, so that is showing as a minus 13% increase, or 13% decrease. So I am recommending that. And next year is a revale year, as was discussed earlier tonight. Next is the treasurer-collector's wages, part-time wages line. This shows as a 5.2% increase, but it is a 1.5% increase, and it includes the file clerk as an employee year-round instead of fluctuating between employee and senior tax work-off participant. We've eliminated doing that kind of duplicate senior tax, the shifts between senior tax work-off and employment. So this captures the file clerk as an employee in this budget. So I am recommending that.
So is she an actual employee and not doing work off?
An actual employee.
Okay, good. Because it seemed like that was a violation if she's working all year.
It was, it was, it was fluctuating back and forth, and that was something that we've tried really hard to get away from. So we've made a lot of progress.
Okay, that was, that was my question. You answered it.
Okay. The next one is treasurer-collector expenses. This reflects a decrease. Quickly grab my submission here.
Do you carry that binder around like on, you know, your right side and your left side to like build muscle equally?
I know where everything is in here. Okay, so a his decrease, the decrease is due to. If you were here, you could answer it right away. Increase?
Not much.
No, it's not much.
$750?
It's $750. I'm guessing it is. I'm sorry.
It went down.
It did go down. I wanted to be able to explain why it went down.
Down is good.
You okay with down?
Yeah, we're okay with down.
You okay with down? All right, I'll give you a, I'll give you an explanation tomorrow when I find it. All right, let me put this back. All right, got it. Okay, next is?
Registration, wages, part-time?
Yeah, next is registration wages. It is actually salary. This is actually a statutory amount that is, that the town clerk is entitled to as the clerk of the board of registrars. So I'm recommending that. The next is conservation commission expenses. They are not, there's no movement in their budget at all. They are level funding their budget. That covers the cost of, I think, they, they belong to an association. They also do legal ads for their hearings and things. So I am recommending that, that remain at $2,200. Next is planning board expenses. Again, that is level funded. They have costs that are similar to conservation commissions. That's level funded at $2,000, and I'm recommending that. Next is Board of Appeals. They also have, this is actually Board of Appeals' part-time wages. They actually just appropriate a sum of money and pay LeAnn her hourly rate within that, that sum of money to assist them. So that's remaining level funded, and I'm recommending that. Their expenses are $600, with similar cost to the other two commissions. I'm recommending that. Next, Public Safety, police salary. This is the contractual increase that is due to the chief. That is accurate, and I recommend that.
So question.
Sure.
I'm blanking on the word. For police and fire, as I've seen in other towns, it specifically will give name, you know, like Chief Tom Galvin, $800 bazillion, you know, salary. Will, will that happen? Because what I've seen in past reports is that things get lumped together, so it's very hard to define, like, actually what went up, you know, or what might have gone down, so.
Yeah. The detail that accompanies this actually goes into, you know, goes into that level. Whether, it's going to be tough. I think it's a discussion I have to have with June because, and we're talking about changing the account names.
Yeah. Because then you would just be giving it, just for, most of the salaries are single salaries.
you could look up and see what...
Oh, no, because in our, Dennis' town report, I think he lists what people are paid.
Okay.
In the annual town report, he doesn't.
He did.
He said he does.
No, he said he did.
But you can get that information.
I was just asked that question recently because I guess that used to be a practice in the town report and then...
And it's got all lumped together.
Yeah, someone asked about that just recently. So if that was a path that we wanted to look at, I think it could be done with more accounting, you know, accounting budget detail. But we'd also have to, if we're going to do it with full-time, non-salaried positions, hourly positions, including those who are eligible for overtime, say, you know, firefighter EMTs and things like that, I'd want to see a separate overtime line too then, because, and actually pull that out so that we see...
It's all right here. It's all up on the website.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
But not in the annual town report. Some towns do put the annual town report.
Yeah, so it's on the website, not the annual town report?
Yeah.
So...
But you also have to remember, if you vote it by line item, that's where it stays. You have no leeway.
Yeah, you don't want to do that. You don't want to put it that way.
So you're saying it's easier if you lump and you just say...
Well, it depends on what...
For the budget, yes. And then you can, if you want to add in about this.
Like you could require that people had to put it in their town reports. You know what I mean? You could have it in other places. It's just that if you vote it in the town, in the line items at town meeting, that's all you can spend on.
They don't even...
So like Margaret said, if you were to specify what each person would be eligible for overtime, you couldn't like bounce it between if needed.
You can't actually put it on here. You don't want to do that. That backs you into corners.
Normally it's not voted by line item by person. I mean, it's in the budget and technically that's why we have the personnel bylaw type thing is that nobody gets paid more than what they're awarded.
They don't even actually put names of teachers, I don't think, in what they're making. They just put the chart, don't they?
Usually.
Yeah, yeah. But with the budget requests come those backup sheets, maybe that's something that we could...
Because I mean, it's all public information.
It is.
Yeah, every single person who's on staff is right here with what they made.
Okay. I don't think people realize that that's available.
Then they need to go on the website. You know, you can't. It's all there.
And does Dennis, Dennis does not print that as part of his report?
No.
It would not be a bad idea. It's already done.
And our...
There's an opposition to it.
Oh, there has, okay.
It's also, our annual time report is already a gazillion pages which we pay for by the page, just so you know.
It's also posted at the town clerk's office too, because we have to post it on who we pay.
Yeah, if people really want, any of this information is all available to anybody who wants it.
I mean, if there's adjustments on other places to put it, we can do that too.
Okay, did we just finish police chief? Okay. Next up is building inspector salary. This shows as a 3.5% increase. However, it is actually based on his starting salary this year. It really only represents a 1.5% increase over the budget, over the, his salary, his salary that he was given this year. So it is a 3.5% increase, but it's 1.5% over the salary he's getting. He's not getting 3.5% increase.
Got it.
Got it?
In Margaret, we trust. Go ahead.
Okay. Wages, full-time. Okay, so this was an item that was added last year as a potential additional position, partly because of, I think, the River Bridge development. This position is not needed, so he has removed the entire amount from the budget. That's $39,994, so it's a 100% decrease. I'm not doing a recommendation yet on part-time wages, only because that does include a part-time local inspector and I want to be sure that the hours that are being proposed are realistic and accurate. The next is the expense line. He's reduced that by $34 or down 0.1%. This covers the cost of viewpoint, code books, office supplies, you name it, everything else. So I'm recommending that total amount of $28,696.
Good.
Next is animal control officer salary. Police chief will be here, I think, next week with his monthly report and will report on animal control officer activities. There has been enough progress made locally that the recommendation for regional animal control won't come back this coming year. I think he's satisfied with the services that are being provided now. They've made progress as far as issuing a cell phone, doing reporting, and they've been working closely together. So he is proposing a salary paid in monthly stipends to the animal control officer totaling $5,481, and I am recommending that. Expenses, because so much was budgeted to move to a regional service last year, most of that is being reduced and what's left is for the animal control officers, supplies and expenses, including the cell phone. It's a 79% decrease. Okay. Next up, we have a very small budget, the historical commission. They are requesting level funding at $600 and I'm recommending that. Memorial Day expenses, the increase of $100 is actually for flowers for Memorial Day. It does show a 5% increase, but again, it's $100.
I love it. I love it.
Shame on you, Roger. I am recommending, I am recommending that. And then finally, line 109, unemployment insurance. This is an amount that's budgeted every year. It would pay for a potential claim if a person in a higher level position filed an unemployment claim. It may not be able to absorb all those costs, but this would be a start toward paying unemployment claims and I recommend that.
And you need a motion to approve. So moved?
Second?
Indeed.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Good job so far, Margaret.
Oh, okay. I'm getting tired.
I think we are.
You all are.
Yes.
And giddy.
I'll say.
One more.
Okay, approval of advertisement for applicants for interim CPA committee with a memo to the co-appointing authorities. And the bylaw was in the Google Drive. Anything else you want to add or...
The one thing that I would add is just to reiterate that the board has adopted, I don't know what we called it, guidelines for its at-large appointments. So what it would be looking for in candidates for the two board appointees. And I have those in front of me.
So, but we're going to advertise?
We would advertise and I would suggest including what the board has adopted as guidelines for the appointments.
Okay. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So board questions and comments?
I have, I have some.
Just two? Well, maybe.
Wow.
So we, Margaret and I both went to the Devon's Dispatch, the last Devon's Dispatch meeting and we had a chance to talk with Ross, how do you say his last name?
I say Clone or...
Clone? I'm not really sure.
Ross?
Ross, that's what I call him. He's the director. And he was very interested in coming to our coffee talk February 13th, which is coming up rather quickly.
Yeah, and I was going, I wanted to put something out there, to some ideas, hoping maybe we can gather more people out there to tell them what we're going to talk about. You know, Margaret, I think that you would want to talk about getting the public's input for 1870, you know, what we can do. So if we can come up with a list and I can start to circulate that out on Berlin Neighbors Connect and Berlin Residents United or whatever that other website is, so if you want to send me those, I'll put them out.
Okay. That was my next question is do we want to do that?
Introduce chief.
Yeah, the new fire chiefs.
We have a lot of new staff, Richard, also.
Yep.
Well, that was my next question is do we want to combine like the emergency, the public safety people with the 1870 town hall use at that coffee talk? Or do we want to do it separately or invite different groups that have...
Yeah, I mean, I think that we should invite different groups, kind of like we did last time, you know, Chief Galvin was very informative about all the safety and the streets and the traffic that was going on. So I think the more information that we could push, I mean, we'll definitely have our question and answer session that we have and then direct it more towards, hey, public, what do you want to do with the town hall? Hey, you know, Nishoba person, what do you want to talk about? So if you can...
Do you want to break it into two separate pieces? Have the public safety piece go first and then, and then kind of...
We can. Yeah, I mean, because if he's a faraway guy, then make him go first and then...
Cambridge, I think.
Cambridge?
Cambridge.
Wow. Okay. So public safety first and then just kind of transition into the town hall use ideas?
Yeah, and whatever else, yeah, whatever else.
A brainstorming session?
A brainstorming session.
And I think maybe we need to come up with a list of who to invite, even as far as, you know, the previous town hall advisory committee, the recreation, we need to maybe specifically invite those people or those groups.
Well, can we make this an agenda item next week if it's not too full, where we can kind of like flush it out?
I think coffee talk probably should be on the agenda next week.
Ms. Mary, can you add that? Thank you, ma'am.
I'll put it in my notes too. Did I ask all my questions? Oh, no. There was one other thing that I didn't know whether we could take care of tonight. I know you're going to the annual business meeting.
Yes.
And I thought maybe we, as a board, unless either one of you is planning to go to the...
MMA.
MMA, yeah. If we're not, we could authorize Margaret to be our voter.
The voting delegate.
The voting delegate.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Get the card.
I know.
Get the card.
It's very exciting. I did that.
Can you get your star? Can you use the star like when you have to vote?
Oh, my God. That would be hilarious. That would be hilarious.
It's kind of fun. I used to do that at school committees.
Yeah, she can tell it's late.
Wave a wand?
No, no, not wave a wand.
Or you could wear the headband that lights up and every time you want to vote, just flick the light on. Oh, my God.
So anyway, that was my two things. So did we just vote?
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
In the end, we did.
It's getting really late.
Yeah, I really...
We're good.
Okay, so any other questions or comments?
Mine can wait. It's not important.
Okay. Then I don't believe we have need for an executive session this evening.
No, in fact, you could probably, you know, inform the public that the, you know...
That we have a sort of a...
Tensive agreement.
Tensive agreement with our new fire chief. That we're looking forward to perhaps getting him to sign on the dotted line very quickly, so...
Oh, can we get, oh, no. I was going to say, can we get him to come in like we did for Margaret, but the coffee talks too late.
He'll already be on board.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but we could still...
Oh, he'll come.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he'll come, but no, like we did for Margaret when we had her signed.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
No, I wanted to continue.
And a second?
No.
I'll second it then. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.